Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start off with a moment of silence and then we go into the pledge of allegiance, keeping in mind tonight, if you could, to the family of John Ali, past principal here at Florence Tech K through eight, who passed away yesterday. Keep him and his family in mind. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. This is a call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At this time, I have no request to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no movement, we'll close call to the public. Brent, presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure coming before you this evening. We've delayed this presentation a couple of times. It was originally scheduled for the first meeting in August, and we have enough time tonight to be able to provide the presentation, if the thing works. Uh-oh, guess I'm going to go to Plan B. As council is aware, and the public is going to become aware, as part of my contract when I was hired by the town of Florence, one of the things that was included in that contract was to provide a list of goals and objectives identified by the town manager's office to advance in the stead of the council. The purpose slide, which is here, of course, everyone can read this, simply explains what a town manager's job is under the council manager form of government. Has a simple twist on the end, though, and that includes the public in terms of informing the public and providing the services that the folks need here to enjoy a safe, productive place to live, work, and play. As I just mentioned, in accordance with Section 11 of my contract with the town of Florence, I have prepared a performance plan. What are some of the things that the mayor and council of Florence, and certainly the staff, shares in the ability to provide some major accomplishments that have occurred in the last six-month period when this was prepared? Of course, I've been here eight months now, but at the six-month, of course, we had the 15-16 budget target, which reduced last year's budget by $1.2 million. Club plane management regulation update, 2016 legislative agenda, pavement preservation program, which is the first time that was visited in a few years, the expenditure limitation special election, and I think this is a good point, to congratulate the town council on 411 being approved as recent as last week, so that we have home rule for a four-year period, and thanks to all of those citizens who became educated on that issue and supported that issue in our most recent election. Employee benefit, cost reduction, certainly the CFD bond sales for GO and special bonds, which was the first time that had occurred in several years. Public Works Director recruitment, Chris is to my right here, as well as balancing the 2016-17 budget. So those are some pretty major accomplishments over the last six months. What does that mean when the city manager goes in, the town manager goes in, and thinks about, based on conversations, meetings, direction provided, certainly trying to understand the needs of the town going forward through the budget process with the Budget Committee and hundreds of meetings since I've been here and conversations? I've identified eight major issues through all those discussions, and they're in no particular order, but they are the issues that I've heard again and again and again, and certainly have come about as part of the discussions with the most recent strategic plan meetings and some of the surveys that we've received. Economic development, water and wastewater infrastructure, roads and streets, historic preservation, relationships, internal, external, governmental, private sector, et cetera, public safety, customer service, and quality of life. These eight major issues have come up again and again and again. So I want to talk a little bit about each of those, starting with economic development. From what I've heard, economic development means three primary things in Florence: quality jobs, retail, and downtown. And once again, in no particular order, these are not prioritized. What does quality jobs mean? That means business retention, business expansion, new employers, job diversification. I've heard again and again, under retail, about additional retail opportunities. Folks want to see additional retail in Florence. And the downtown, the downtown consistently comes up. Events making it vibrant, attractive, functional. Mr. Chee, I think is in the audience, and I think I have heard that from him and many others multiple times, but also effective marketing, and that's been talked about a lot lately. Water and wastewater. When I got to Florence, we had some challenges in our utilities, and as a matter of fact, we were under consent order from the state of Arizona on the wastewater side. Our water supply, where is our future water coming from? Are we maintaining our system? Can we ensure high-quality water? Can we do reclamation, which means can we treat water, inject and get credits, or inject and recover? And as you know, council has been gracious enough to approve and allow staff to move forward in that reclamation role. We will be a leader in small cities and towns in Arizona. Infrastructure, as you know, a lot of maintenance is ongoing. You got a presentation at the first meeting in August from EUSI regarding some of those efforts on the water and wastewater side, but also there is a sizable capital improvement plan that was approved by council during the budget process regarding our sewage treatment plants, upgrades and plans for expansion. Roads and streets, setting up a right-of-way permitting process that's trackable, that's consistent. A lifecycle program, which basically means providing the maintenance necessary to reduce the expenditures for all-out reconstruction. If we plan out our lifecycle of our pavement properly, we can spend less than 50% of what the cost of replacement is and extend the life of pavement. Acquire additional funding, improve drainage. You've heard me speak especially multiple times during the budget process about how drainage and roads and streets work hand in hand. A lot of the damage that we have in town to streets like First Street is because they don't drain properly, because the water sets and settles or sets along the pavement. The structure of pavement is what's below the asphalt. The asphalt is just the top coat. The structure is that gravel, that dirt, that structure that's below the asphalt. When you allow that to be saturated by water, it causes failure in the asphalt pavement above. Also, the ability to enhance, so reconstruct existing roads. I hope many of you have had a chance to go out and take a look at diversion dam. It's almost completed, at least our phase of diversion dam is almost completed. That's a great example of reconstruction and new construction. The street scape project downtown, multimodal improvements. I had a council member come and see me today and talk to me about multimodal improvements, specifically the needs of cyclists in our community. But also the ability to expand our system. I'm sure it isn't lost on council or on the public, that the town has done a number of annexations, and we have a very large land area. With that becomes the need to expand our system, to provide connectivity, to provide mobility for our residents, and to prepare for future growth. And last, I would highlight, I think, something that's high on everyone's list from the council perspective, the importance of the north-south corridor to our future. Historic preservation, a lot of conversations have taken place regarding the historic district with historic district members. I didn't call you historic members. As you know, we took a tour to Tucson, and we went and talked to some of the experts in the state regarding infill, regarding historic preservation, regarding historic properties and historic districts. We sent members to the historic preservation conference. We have invested in education to be able to enhance these opportunities. So infill, a lot of discussions taken place regarding vacant properties. We've talked about encouraging investment in the downtown. We've talked about the need for innovative programs, projects, including the Territory Square, visual enhancements to our downtown, providing supporting infrastructure, that is speaking to our CDBG grant application for fire protection in the downtown, but also the discussion, our CIP, regarding the needs to update our general plan and to continue to move forward. The importance of code enforcement, and the importance of customer service in terms of simplifying and streamlining our processes to the best of our abilities. Relationships, relationships are very important to be progressive, to move forward. Who are those relationships? Penal County, the town of Coolidge, the San Carlos tribe, including their subsidiaries of San Carlos Irrigation and Drainage District, San Carlos Indian Power, our school district, our local junior college, but also the employers are in our town, including local businesses, the prisons, and the supporting industries. Not to forget our state and regional and federal governmental entities, and also to work on our communications and relationships internal between the council and the manager, the manager and the employees, and the employees and our customer, and we are working on all of those, and we'll continue to see progress. Public safety, from a police perspective, we've talked about maintaining optimum levels. One of the point of pride that the town of Florence has is being the safest city in Arizona, and last I checked, the 13th safest city in the United States. The importance of maintaining that. From a fire perspective, maintaining optimum levels. This next one I want to hit on for the chief, enhancing our ISO rating, as you probably know from the emails we've been sending, that's something that we're actually working on right now. They are coming to do their visit this month, October 20th, so next month, and we are diligent, we just had a meeting on it this morning, we're diligently putting together the information necessary to hopefully enhance that ISO rating. For anybody in the public or in the audience wondering what that is, that is the rating that's utilized to determine how expensive your home insurance, or cheap your home insurance and your fire insurance are on your properties. You want the town to rank very high because it costs you less to insure your home or business. Education and assistance from the fireside, that's something that's been brought up fairly consistently, not only from fire, but also from community development. We have a couple of success stories with respect to helping folks in that way. And from the facilities perspective, providing the infrastructure that's necessary for our public safety folks, including equipment, technology, vehicles. As you know, we've funded a couple of vehicles for the police department this year. We have gotten a grant for radios. Chief and I just talked about this 30 minutes ago, trying to get another grant to continue to replace radios, so we're working on these things. Customer service, this is something that I've heard over and over and over again, and I would say is the main topic of the first discussion, the first strategic plan advisory committee meeting. What is good customer service? I think that they're going to talk about that more at the next meeting. In my mind, it's accountability. It's doing what we say and saying what we do. It's transparency. Having meaningful public involvement. I have received so many positive comments from folks. As a matter of fact, an individual who lives in Sun City Anthem just came and booked hours to come, actually, I spent two hours with him last week in my office thanking me for transparency and meaningful public involvement. What is meaningful public involvement? That's educating folks, that's hearing and documenting what folks have to say, and then that's considering that information as part of that implementation. So the strategic plan will be an example, a published example, of meaningful public involvement. We're educating folks on strategic planning and on the town. We're allowing people the opportunity to provide feedback in a number of ways. We're documenting that feedback. We'll be putting that together and providing that to council, and that will be part of the process that's utilized for council to determine its strategic plan going forward. It's having a good relationship with the media outlets. I think we have an excellent relationship with our media outlets. And it's to provide open and honest information. You've seen me and some of our staff members multiple times in the last eight months stand up here and share information with council that we're not particularly proud of, but we think it's important to state when we make a mistake, move forward, and attempt not to make that mistake again. One of the key things regarding customer service, in my mind, goes back to competency. And in order to be competent and to be confident, you have to educate, empower, and enable our employees, and we're working towards that. Quality of life, broadening our arts culture and events. We're trying to always get better, and we've got a fine team that works on that. To provide needed services in town, an indicative statement regarding that is the durable medical equipment program. I think that's what we're calling that. Providing adequate facilities. We have some beautiful facilities. We need to make sure that we keep them in good order and have them open for our folks. Provide ample recreation opportunities, expand the services of the library, and to partner with education in Penal County and in Florence, and we're doing that. We have started and are continuing a wonderful relationship with the county school superintendent's office. We are continuing to enhance our relationship with our local school district, and certainly the feather and the cap of education is our teen leadership program, which I believe is going to be an innovative program for the entire state of Arizona. But also looking to our community's needs, and the strategic plan is going to assist. In my mind, what are some of the highest priorities that we're currently working on? Number one, and these aren't in any particular order, but the one at the top, and I think it probably is the biggest priority, is making sure that we have a sustainable financial future for Florence. Certainly, the council strategic plan is very important. Infrastructure financing, to upgrade our infrastructure, to continue to maintain it. Economic development, preparing for new residential development, something that we talk about consistently. Our water system, our wastewater system, our street system. And lastly, we have a number, as you know, if you look at the e-session for tonight, we have a number of ongoing legal issues in the town of Florence. We have to be mindful of that and try to take those to an end. Are there any questions?
Any member of the council have any question? Senator Brent, thank you for the presentation, very informative.
Item seven, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda. Unless a member of council or a member of the public object at the time the item is called. Item A, proclamation of the mayor declaring September 2016 as grand family kinship care month. Item B, approval of the Coolidge-Florence Elks Lodge application for the special event liquor license application to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for the demolition derby event to be held on October 1st, 2016, at the Florence rodeo grounds, Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds. Item C, resolution number 1597-16, approval of the resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, declaring a public record of a certain document filed with the town clerk entitled Territory Square Zoning District Book dated July 27, 2016. Item D, approval to purchase nine Motorola APX 7,000 digital portable radios, associated equipment, in an amount not to exceed $65,987.15. Item E, approval to purchase one 2016 Mini Excavator 303E for Public Works Department to Empire Machinery, in an amount not to exceed $39,000. Item F, approval and acceptance of the register of demands ending July 31, 2016, in an amount Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda this evening.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
I'd like to have item D taken off. Question on that.
D?
D.
Any others? I'll make a motion to accept the bill. Let me ask the public if they want. Does any member of the public have anything they want taken off the consent agenda? Senator, okay? I move that we accept the consent agenda as read, with the exception of item D.
I'll second.
We have a motion to accept, a second to accept the agenda item as read, with the exception of item D. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item D.
A question about item D, I guess, Jennifer, is that...
We are prepared, council member.
The police department was unable to purchase the third dispatch console due to unanticipated installation and ongoing service costs. What does that really mean?
Mayor Rankin, Councilman Anderson, members of the council, the grant was originally awarded to fund the third 911 dispatch console, and when the procurement process started with that project, the police department found that there were cost overruns that were unanticipated as far as installation of telecommunication lines, as well as ongoing service. So the amount that was going to exceed what the grant covered was about $20,000 a year in ongoing costs. So knowing that there's a need to replace our existing portable radios, we requested of the Gila River Indian Community to change the scope of the project, to purchase radios instead of the dispatch console. And I'm sure Chief Hughes can add more detail to that.
Well, yeah, I'd like to know how critical is that other console?
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Anderson, we're looking at the state, hopefully in another year or so, will come along and help us out with the console. What we found is if we'd have purchased a console now on our own, we'd be ahead of the curve there, but the ongoing costs were going to be like $2,000 a month, that if it's put in by the state and on their timetable, they'll pick up the cost. So we felt that we're fine right now. We were looking to get ahead of the curve, but with what we have, we'll be fine. We'll still utilize the system for that third console area for a training area, just won't be able to take the calls for service right now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item D of the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Unfinished business. Item A, ordinance number 64916, second reading and discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, to amend Territory Square zoning book per section 150.070. Territory Square TS contained within the land use section of the town of Florence Code of Ordnances. Case PZ16-51ORD. Mr. Eckhoff will be presenting.
Mark.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I brought with me again tonight the same presentation that we went over two weeks ago, and Mr. Denzack has his presentation as well. Before I do that, I would ask you if there's any interest in me going over the presentation again, or if you would just like to ask me any questions if you have any.
I think most of us remember the presentation.
I don't want you to. Huh? I don't need him to do it again.
You don't need to go through it again? Okay, I believe we're all in the same boat, Mark.
And then Mayor, council, I don't have anything further to add, actually, on all three items.
Okay, on all three items, is that correct?
Yes. So they each still will require a separate action, but as far as the presentation, nothing further to add, sir.
And if I understand right, this doesn't have to go to another public hearing tonight?
These are all action items tonight.
What's that?
These are all actions and no public hearing and just action items.
Mm-hmm. Long time coming. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 649-16.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 649-16. Any other discussion? Mary, John?
You know, with all the political things that we saw last month, we don't get very excited about these motions. You know, you'd like to say, I really want to nominate this or approve this, and, you know, my citizens from Florence are behind this, but this is, this particular project that's going on now is so exciting for all of us that, you know, I think we all would like to make a speech on it, but I'm so proud that we're doing this.
Good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, resolution number 1596-16, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the Territory Square expansion minor general plan amendment for the property located at the southeast corner of Butte Avenue and Plant Road. Case number PZ16-49GPA. Mr. Mayor.
Again, we've heard Mark say he doesn't have anything else to present on it. John, I'm going to get on this one because I think that this is a great thing for Florence on Butte and for the property owners down there. I wish we had more businessmen like Harold trying to do something in Florence, and Florence would grow in a hurry. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 1596-16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1596-16. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item C, ordinance number 652-16, second reading of and discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Arizona, Penal County, Arizona, approving the Territory Square zone change on approximately 40 acres located at the southeast corner of Butte Avenue and Plant Road. Mr. Mayor.
Again, Mark doesn't have anything to add. Anybody else have anything? I need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 652-16.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 652-16. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Get to work. Congratulations, Harold.
Thank you, Harold.
Thanks for making Florence popular.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have up with me today Mr. Jamie White. Does everybody know Jamie? He's our GIS coordinator for the town of Florence, and I'm happy to launch, for the first time ever, the beta version of our CIP tool. And Jamie is the guy who's been working on it for the past month and a half, and we've got it to a point where we now have a beta that we're going to have up on the website to test, and we're going to continue enhancing it. So I'm going to have him pull it up and walk you through an example of what's there and where it's at on the website, and have it on TV, so folks can also realize that. Jamie?
Thank you, Brent. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. How are you?
Can I speak into that mic, or I'll get yelled at by your department?
Thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Again, Brent started off by discussing about the fact that we've been putting together a capital improvement project tool for you guys to use. So, what we have here is on the town website, there's two locations you can locate. It's under here under services right here, or if you want to find a little bit simpler, it's right here located under services right in the middle of our page.
Louder.
Louder? Okay. So, once you access it through the maps and GIS section here, you're gonna access all of our different web tools that we have available. Many people have already been using our address search, our zoning search application, but what we have now is our capital improvement project beta form available for you right here.
If I had a cowboy hat on, it'd be all right.
Hey. So, here, here's our tool right here. I'm not sure what you'd like to talk about on it, Brent.
This is, this is what it looks like. Why don't you go ahead and pull up Diversion Dam Road?
All right. So, what you can do is on any of these projects in the map, you can either find it through clicking on it, or you can just look for the map right through here through a little dropdown menu. But by clicking on it right here, you can pull up all the information about the diversion dam project that's been provided to us. You can scroll through, you can find out where you got the record from, what, how many total records you can find for that project, so it's only for this fiscal year.
Name of project?
Yep.
Year of fiscal year, type of funding, what the budget of the project is. This had already gone to council prior to this, and actually that project was awarded, I want to say in 2010. Is, is that correct? So, we, we don't have the council dates. We do know who designed it, it's in there. We do know who the contractor is. Their contact information is available, and certainly when it's completed, which it's nearing completion, we'll demarcate it on here as a completed CIP project. But for all of the physical CIP projects, they are included as part of the tool, and there's a wealth of information with respect to each of them. What we hope to do in the near future is to provide a project schedule for each project that actually breaks it down that would be available once you click on this site. But we're not at a point yet where we've hired our on-call engineers or built MS project schedules for the individual project. We do have Excel schedules that Public Works is working on right now to give folks an idea of what quarter of the year the project will go out to bid, for example, and when we anticipate completion. But there's a lot of information available, and it's very easy to find and, and very intuitive on the, on the website beta at this time. Okay? You're done.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. An announcement. The Florence PD will soon be hosting our second Citizens Academy. It will run on Wednesday nights, starting in early October. If you're interested in learning more about the police, what police officers do and more about the town of Florence, please sign up. Wow, I can't tell what this says. I think it says hands-on experience, for hands-on experience. And I can tell you, as somebody who went and spoke at the program last year and got to meet the participants and worked through that process, they, they really appreciated it. Maybe we should get something on the webpage and get some of those folks that participated last year to give us a vote of confidence on what they experienced and that they liked it. But I know they were to, to the letter, all of them were very excited to have gone through the process, and some of them actually that went through the process very much wanted to and are participating in our strategic planning process as well. So, it's a neat thing, it's well done, and I, I encourage you to take part in our next academy. I now need to read, and this is a very important thing, into the record of news release that was provided by the government, Government Finance Officers Association. The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the town of Florence by the Governors Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFPA, for its comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and is, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individuals or department or agency designated by the government as the primarily responsible for preparing an award-winning CAFER. This has been presented to Finance Department of the town of Florence. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the needs and standards of the program, including and demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate the financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. The GFPA is a nonprofit professional organization serving approximately 17,500 government financed professionals with offices in Chicago and Washington DC. Applause goes out to the council, the Budget Committee, and certainly the Finance Department. On your achievement. Next, I wanted to let council know that the town of Florence has been awarded a $1,500 grant for smoke detectors for our fire safety program that we're hoping to implement this fall. Chief, would you like to say something with respect to that?
Yeah, we, we're gonna be able to buy 100 smoke detectors. We're looking to target elderly, probably starting in the Caliente area, going door-to-door, making sure they have working smoke detectors. And if they don't, we'll install them along with safety messages and just to, you know, whatever else is needed in terms of evaluating the, the safety of the properties.
Chief, who provided the grant?
The, it's the solar plant that's out by Station 2. The name's escaping me here, but it's that, it's that plant out there.
Which one?
Who's the solar plant out off of Hunt Highway? Sandstone? But who owns it?
No, 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 it's the one over by Station, right across the street from Station 2 over there. It's, it's, it's a branch of that company.
Okay. Very good. Well, we certainly appreciate their contribution and look forward to that program. Last, I have another letter to read into the record, and this is from FEMA and the National Emergency Training Center. Dear Chief Strayer, congratulations. It's my pleasure, pleasure to inform you of your acceptance into the U.S. Fire Administration's National Fire Academy. Fire Executive Officer Program to commence within fiscal year 2017 from October 1st through September 30th. October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017. This, this year, the selection process was particularly difficult for the NFA. There were many qualified applicants and a limited number of EFOP slots. You will be assigned to one of our executive development course offerings, which will be held at the National Emergency Training Center in Emmetville, Maryland. I'm sorry. I need bifocals. Anything you'd like to say with respect to that, Chief?
Just that it's a four-year program and that there's a research paper that's required after you attend for two weeks, you do a research paper after each attendance. So, it's a very difficult program to get in. I was very happy to get in, and I'm looking forward to taking the knowledge I learned from there and applying them to Florence, applying that to Florence for, in, in terms of public safety. So, I appreciate the opportunity.
Certainly is a prestigious program, and we're very proud of you. From a staff perspective, I'm sure the council is very proud of you as well. Can we give Dave a round of applause for his achievement? Have, Mayor.
Just make sure that if he goes back in December, that he's got plenty of warm clothes, and especially if he stays at those dorms there on the campus, they are cold. They use steam heating back there. I've been there, I know what I'm talking about, so you want to make sure to take lots of warm clothes.
We'll, we'll send his turnouts with him.
He'd have sleep in them, I'll tell you. Brent, you also brought up, does any member of the council have any questions, Brent, on his report? A couple times tonight, you've talked about the completion of Diversion Dam Road, or, yeah, Diversion Dam Road. I noticed today that they took all the barricades down, it's opened up for traffic. Now, we're still waiting now at this point for the ADOT. Have they been contacted, told them they're ready to go on putting that traffic control device in?
I appreciate the question, and it's a very good one. The project is only 50% complete. Our, our part of the project, which included utility relocation, certainly paving, concrete work, also providing the utilities and conduit necessary for ADOT, our portion of that project is complete. ADOT now needs to come in and install the signal per our agreement. We have contacted ADOT, they have come up and looked at the project throughout. I don't know if they've been up in the last couple of weeks, Chris, but I know they looked at it four weeks ago, they've been up. So, as their funding becomes available, they will be moving forward on their portion. Did they give you an idea of a timeframe, Chris? No, no timeframe's been provided, but they have been notified.
When I contact ADOT tomorrow, I will ask on that. Another question is, we talked to them about the bridge over 79. That's a, a bridge with troubled waters over the, over the river.
Yep. That's bad shit.
Do any other members of the council have any questions, Brent's report? Okay? Any of the department heads reports?
I have two questions. The first one is for community development. I had a resident call me asking for clarification. I figured tonight would be the best to bring it out. Where it says staff continues to respond to inquiries regarding the purchase of land within the Anthem or Anthem at Merrill Ranch Communities. It is an ongoing item, and it does specify that, but could you provide a update on that for everybody?
Vice Mayor, Mayor, Members of the council. Yes, there have been continuous inquiries, due diligence, I should say, about looking at buying undeveloped portions of, of Anthem or even going into the Merrill Ranch development. And so, in the case of Anthem, it's primary interest in the west, in the west side of Anthem, so that would be the future subdivisions that are on the west side of, of Hunt Highway. And also, there is interest in the, in the, what we call the land swap area where Pulte now is building a new subdivision within Merrill Ranch. Around there, there's also some interest in, in that. There is, there are two particular entities that are, that are looking at a deal. Nothing has been consummated at this point, but we've been providing responses in regards to impact fees and CEFDs and zoning and, and zoning amendments and so forth. So, nothing concrete at this point, it continues to be discussed.
Okay. Thank you. My second question was for Public Works. There were a few questions from some business owners in the community regarding the digging that had occurred for the lampposts and the barricades that were placed there. They are communicating that it's affecting their business as well, so they were wondering, have the lights yet been ordered? Any updates that we could provide would be appreciated.
Vice Mayor Walter, thank you for the question. I did have a conversation last week, I believe it was Monday, with one of the business owners on Main Street. Concerns, I believe that you're echoing regarding the, the holes where the old streetlights were removed, and then the holes that are being dug where the new streetlights are gonna be built, are gonna, going in, and what we're doing with regards to identifying that space as a, as a hazard for pedestrians. So, right now, we have the, the barricades that are put up and with a little light on top, and it was the concerns that were vocalized to me was with regards to the aesthetics, what that looks like, and some concerns with regards to some confusion from maybe some customers that might think that there's no parking in that area. So, two things that we've done, I'll, I'll update you with regards to conversations we're having right now. Looking at putting some signage on either side of the project area, indicating that the, the downtown is open for business and, and that old parking, you know, parking is, is not restricted in, where you, where you see the barricades. So, put some, some type of notification on, on both sides of the street, just letting people know that, you know, come to the downtown. There's no street closures as part of this project, and there's, there's from time to time, there's a couple closures of some parking spaces for a couple days, and they move on to the, the next parking spaces. But, you know, the public shouldn't understand that there's, there's no road closure in the downtown. We, we encourage everybody to come to the downtown and, and shop and, and, you know, walk up and down Main Street like you would, you know, under, under previous, under normal circumstances. As far as the timing of the, of the lights and so forth, we were looking, we were told that it was a 12-week time period, which put us into the, possibly into the early December timeframe. Received a email with a time schedule from the contractor, is either today or, or was sent out late last week, showing that we, we might see that as, as, as early as, early November. So, we're just waiting on the, the timing of those lights to, to be located. So, I, I hope that helps a little bit with some of your concerns, what we're talking about, the schedule with the installation of the new lights could be as early as November. That's what we're, we're hoping for. The initial expectation was closer to December, and like I said, we'll try to put up some signage that's gonna encourage folks to come to the downtown. The reason for the barricades, as opposed to the idea coming from the, the business owner last week, was to put some grates over the top, which is a little bit more aesthetic and a little more, you know, less obtrusive as far as the barricades. However, we're, we gotta, we have to watch very carefully with regards to how we handle this situation, as, as the council's well aware. If there's a little lip or a variation in, in between two sidewalks, and somebody comes and trips over that, like it's happened in the past, but, you know, we, we, the town gets sued and there's some liability that, that are associated with, with anything we do to, to close off areas that are unsafe to the public. So, it's a, it's a balance of, of that. It's, it's certainly a construction site. We're doing the best we can, and hopefully by speeding up the, the project timeline potentially and, and putting up some signage, we'll try to mitigate some of the concerns that we're hearing from the business owners and from yourself.
Okay. Is there a reason, did we know that it was going to take three months before the lights were ordered, or is there a reason why we dug so early on?
One of the reasons for the, the, the lights have, have been ordered, the, the initial estimate, sometimes you hear when, if, just like, like all of us, we go to, to a website and order something from a manufacturer or from a company. A lot of times when they tell us what the expectation is for delivery, sometimes exceeds when it actually does, does arrive. So, that's our expectation in this circumstance as well. The reason why the, the lights were not ordered until the contractor, until we had the initial meetings with the contractor, we, we asked for that. We found it was very, very important. We didn't want the contractor to order these lights prior to us having any conversations with the contractor. So, alleviated any, any troubles that, that might come up with regards to them ordering a, a street light that the council, the community, and, and others, you know, was, was unwanted. So, that, that's the reason why that, by the timing is the way it took place.
Any possibility of speeding up the process?
We're, we're trying, we're trying our hardest. Yeah, that, that's, nobody wants to see the construction delayed, and certainly this time of the year, we have, winter visitors are, are gonna start coming back and, you know, late October, early November, and we would sure love to have a completed product, you know, before that happens.
Okay, and I do appreciate your communication because the business owners had informed me that you had talked with them and visited with them. However, just to ask the questions to see if there's anything that we could do to speed it up or make it so their business is a little bit more accessible and people know that they're open, so they continue to frequent their establishments.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions in departments? CNN will go to second call to the public. Any member of the public have anything they'd like to ask or say at this time? CNN, a moment, we'll call, close the, close call to the public, call to the council, Bill.
I'd just like to thank all the citizens that voted for our home rule and, and that came to some of our educational presentations on it, and hopefully in the future, everybody will realize how important it is. It's kind of a archaic law, in my opinion. I think the legislature should look at it and, and maybe do away with it because it, at the time they did it, it made sense. Nowadays, it really doesn't make any sense because there's no community I can think of that, that could operate under, without having the home rule. So, I think it's an election that's needless for the taxpayers, and it's something that maybe you ought to let your legislator know that they, they should maybe revisit it. And I'd also like to thank everybody that voted, and I appreciate the votes I got. Thank you. Karen?
Ditto what Bill just said. I'd also like to thank the council and, and staff for allowing me to attend the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference last, I guess it's been almost two weeks now. I was able to attend some sessions on economic development and the open meeting law and a few other very pertinent topics, and I, I came back with a wealth of information that I hope to be able to share and benefit from in the next four years that hopefully I will be serving. So, again, thanks for the 411 vote, and thanks for turning out for our election. Thank you.
Mary?
Ditto what Karen and Bill said, except I wasn't up for election, but I'm glad the home rule passed. home rule passed.
Thank you.
And also for the league conference.
John? I certainly agree with what the other council members have said. One thing I want to, to mention is that about a month ago, I talked about CAP, about the allocations. Well, the Department of Interior has put out a forecast on Lake Mead for 2017, and they say it's, their forecast is going to be at a thousand and seventy-eight feet, which is three foot above the critical mass. So they are forecasting that there will, will be no short, water shortage out of Lake Mead into CAP in 2017. That's good news. Thank you. Becky?
Yes, just to echo, thank you, all the citizens for voting in the election and for passing our home rule. It's very important. Thank you.
Tara?
Thank you to everybody who has come out as well. They showed out to vote, and it's with heavy heart as well. You know, our community has lost a, a very fond educator as well as administrator, so I, I'd like to just end in a moment of silence for him and his family in respect.
The election that we held this last thirtieth of August was very important for the Town of Florence on the home rule. That means that, in my opinion, that the citizens think we're doing a pretty good job, and they put their faith and trust back into us to be able to manage the money that we are bringing in. Just because we're getting the ability to spend extra revenue that will be coming in that aren't budgeted for, when we go through the budget process, again, we have to be very sure of any new expenditures that we're gonna inherit, or that you want to inherit. So that's gonna be, the next budget session is not gonna be a Christmas wish list, I can guarantee you that. You might have a wish list, but our, the, the powers that be on the Budget Committee will be taking a look at everything that we're doing. We're not, it's not gonna go out and spend a whole bunch of extra money if we don't have to. Again, building up our, our reserve fund, that Becky seems to want to get back up there pretty hurri, uh, pretty fast. The, but again, I believe it's, the citizens are finally realizing that we have been able to, to pull it together for the last two years, provide the services without letting anybody go or increasing property taxes, and I think we're gonna be able to continue on with it. There is a process for going above the home rule, and that is something that we will be looking at over the next three or four years, as far as going to vote of the citizens to do a permanent home rule, so that we don't have to go over four years. So that's coming up. John Ali, who was the superintendent of K through eight, he was also the superintendent, or not superintendent, but principal, he was also the principal of Walker Butte, passed away Thursday night, as I asked for prayers for his family earlier in the presentation. Mr. Ali was aboard for, had been cleared to run for the Pinal County, or for Florence Elementary School District School Board. So his name will be on the ballot. He did get enough signatures to be on the ballot, so he will be on the ballot. Connie and his kids are here now. Our prayers and wishes go out to them for, you know, this is a bad time for them, but Mr. Ali was a friend of the kids. He was respected by the, youngsters were respected by the teachers, and I know a lot of them that are now in high school that were under him, that it really, it really upset him. But John will be, and he was also an employee of the Coolidge School District. So Mr. Ali is gonna be, his death will leave a void in the educational system in Pinal County. The election will be held November 7th for the general election. I'd like to congratulate Jim Cox for running a good race. I'd like to congratulate Tara for beating me, but not by much, yet. We're still in it. We will be in a runoff in the general election. So at this time, our council, I congratulate our council that was elected, even though we haven't finalized it, which we will do on the 19th, but Bill Hawkins, Karen Wall, and Kristen Larson have all been elected to the council, and so it's set. The council's set. The only position left is the mayor's race. We want to remind everybody, there's four, four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two registered voters in the county. Four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two in the three precincts in Florence, not in the county, but in the town. When we have a turnout of less than, Lisa, we had less than fifty percent, is that correct? Unofficially? It, it appears that our, our turnout was less than fifty percent. That means that those of you who voted are in the minority, and I would like to see that get over the fifty percent level in this time, so the majority of the citizens in Florence make the appointments on who goes to, to the mayor's position or any council position. So that's where we're at at this time. We will be going to executive session after motion. We will be coming back after the executive session to close the meeting. At this time, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. We have a motion and a second adjourned to executive session. Any other discussion? Here and now, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will be in executive session.